Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the fifth panel of SCRAP Weapons Conference on Activating UN Special Session on Disarmament, presented together with the Interparliamentary Union. I'm Eloisa Romani, SCRAP Weapons Project Coordinator, and I'm honoured to be chairing a panel with Ambassador Alfredo Labbe, Dr Kenneth Benedict and Dr Randy Riedel, prominent scholars and experts who play a significant role in advancing the agenda of general So I would like to hand over the floor to Ambassador Alfredo Labbe. So Ambassador Alfredo Labbe is Vice President of the International Humanitarian Fact Finding Commission. He retired after a long career in the Chilean Foreign Service, where he served as Political Director General. He previously served as Permanent Representative for Chile to the UN Office and international organisations in Vienna. In 2007, he was elected Chair of the UN Open-Ended Working Group on the Fourth General Assembly Special Session related to disarmament. And Ambassador Labbe is Member of the UN Group on Governmental Experts on Nuclear Disarmament Verification Issues and Professor at the National Academy for Political and Strategic Studies in Chile and at the Chilean Diplomatic Academy. So I would like to hand over the floor to Ambassador Labbe.
So first of all, many thanks to the organisers of this very important conference, SCRAP Weapons and the Interparliamentarian Union and the School of Oriental and African Studies of the University of London. To the good old friends from the civil society that are participating, it's a real honour to be with you today. Well, SSOD IV remains a pending political undertaking intended to take place at the United Nations' most representative and politically legitimate body, the General Assembly. As a universal meeting dealing comprehensively with the first of the three pillars of the United Nations, the fourth special session on disarmament would serve many purposes. The first one being a political reinvigoration of multilateral diplomacy on disarmament, nonproliferation and confidence building. Confidence building is of the essence because the lack of trust lies at the heart of all problems related to international security, to the security dilemma, to deterrence in general. The reinvigoration of multilateralism would emerge from the United Nations' Member States truly interested in nuclear disarmament and the advancement of human security and international humanitarian law. This is urgent in the current environment of great power competition, which exacerbates the dangers inherent, as I said, in the security dilemma and nuclear deterrence as exposed by combined arms races taking place or accelerating right now. And CIPRI has provided very good information, in fact sobering information, regarding the levels of expenditure in arms in general to the tune of $2 trillion US dollars. Its natural model, the model for the SSOD IV, should be previous SSODs, particularly with respect to the need for a fully comprehensive approach to international security, of which disarmament is a vital component, but not the only component, and the high level of political participation. One can only remember the participation in SSOD I, for instance, of Malcolm Fraser from Australia, Justin Trudeau from Canada, Valérie Giscard d'Estaing from France, just to indicate the high level of expectation and political participation that is only one elicited at a time of great stress provoked, obviously, by the Cold War. Such comprehensive approach ought to be conceptually embedded in paragraph nine of the 2005 United Nations Summit final document. And here I'm going to quote paragraph nine because it is very important. I will repeat, is Resolution A/60/1, paragraph nine. "We acknowledge that peace and security, development and human rights are the pillars of the United Nations system and the foundations for collective security and well-being. We recognise that development, peace and security and human rights are interlinked and mutually reinforcing. As a consequence, we cannot continue to address disarmament and nonproliferation as siloed, if such word exists, siloed, big power province dealt with in limited membership venues such as the Conference on Disarmament, paralysed for more than two decades through the abuse of the rule of consensus. SSOD IV would signal a salutary return to democracy, to democracy in multilateralism." The SSOD IV should find tactical inspiration in the mainly humanitarian campaigns leading to the Ottawa and the Oslo Convention and the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. These three instruments, among others, underline the overlapping of disarmament law and international humanitarian law, but also the pressing need to consolidate the human security paradigm, which focuses on the security of human populations rather than the security demands of states. SSOD IV should increase and deepen the levels of civil society participation experienced in 1978, 1982 and 1988. The quest for political legitimacy demands a massive, a massive vital participation of civil society, represented by distinguished NGOs universally recognised, such as the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons, ICANN, which was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in 2017. Such participation of civil society is indispensable to amplify the global impact of an initiative which will succeed only through enhanced levels of awareness and activism, such as those we observe and admire and envy in the environment and climate change movements. Dissemination and awareness extended to younger generations and incorporating indispensable constituencies such as women organisations will secure a proper understanding of the dire humanitarian consequences of any use of nuclear weapons or any weapon of mass destruction. And here we can only look at the consequences of the COVID-19 pandemic to understand the possible consequences of a malicious use of biological means, means of biological warfare, which we have up to a point disregarded until lately. So let us remember that the humanitarian initiative in particular highlighted the basic incompatibility between nuclear weapons and nuclear deterrence and fundamental principles of international humanitarian law. And here I'm going to quote from the preamble of the TPNW, "Such as the principle that the right of parties to an armed conflict to choose methods or means of warfare is not unlimited, the rule of distinction, the prohibition against indiscriminate attacks, the rules on proportionality and precautions in attack, the prohibition on the use of weapons of a nature to cause superfluous injury or unnecessary suffering, and the rules for the protection of the natural environment." Now, the history of the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, but also the example provided by the creation of the Group of Governmental Experts on Nuclear Disarmament Verification Issues, where I have the honour to serve, demonstrate that a vigorous, articulate campaign conducted at the General Assembly can result in success. Success, of course, measured against the results that we obtained. And here, I'm going to finish with a quotation taken from the excellent, excellent vocational paper provided by my distinguished friend Randy. Here it is, one of the basic documents that every multilateralist should know and that I disseminate among my students in the Chilean Diplomatic Academy. "We need to turn disappointment into fresh opportunities for progress." And this is a kind of dictum that we need to bear in mind, especially after the disappointment in which the tenth review conference of the NPT ended. I know that there are positive ways of looking at things. And people say, and people have written, that even failed, quote unquote, "failed" NPT review conferences such as the 2005, where I served as Chairman of a subsidiary of ODI III, or even the 2015 Review Conference, provided some elements which turned into positive results, perhaps for reasons not envisaged by those that made those conferences fail. And the case in point, the most important case in point, is of course the TPNW, which emerged from the disappointment, but not just the disappointment, but the desire from non-nuclear weapons states really bent on advancing nuclear disarmament to twist the arm of big powers in a legal way, but a legal way with political consequences and political consequences that started a process which will continue. We must not forget, never forget, that multilateralism works in long paragraphs, through processes. We can compare these processes to Wagner operas, you know, that are lengthy, that are very detailed, but that finalise in glorious affirmation of human basic values. So thank you so much for allowing me to participate in this wonderful exercise and I stand ready for any questions that may emerge from the audience. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Labbe, for your important contribution and also for remarking the important connection between peace, security, human rights and development. So the next speaker I have the honour to introduce is Dr Kenneth Benedict. She is a lecturer at the Henry School of Public Policy at the University of Chicago and Senior Advisor to the Bulletin of Atomic Scientists, where she served as Executive Director and Publisher. Now, Dr Benedict serves as Advisor to our SCRAP Weapons Project at S.O.S. University of London, the International Student Youth Podwash and the New American Foundation. She's a member of the Council on Foreign Relations and the Chicago Council on Global Affairs. Dr Benedict, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Eloisa, and I thank you for that introduction. I am really honoured to be with you today and to speak about the prospects for a fourth special session devoted to disarmament. Some of what I will say will touch on many of the excellent presentations that you've heard throughout the day, not particularly as a summary, but just as a way of underscoring some of the ideas that have been brought forth in this splendid conference. As many have noted, these are particularly dismal times for those of us seeking nuclear and general disarmament. As you may know, the Bulletin of the Atomic Scientists Doomsday Clock is set at 100 seconds to midnight. Over the past two decades, major nuclear powers have abrogated arms control treaties and agreements. In 2019, the United States and Russia withdrew from the Intermediate Nuclear Forces Treaty that banned a class of weapons in Europe. And a year later, they also withdrew from the Open Skies Treaty that provided a means for verifying weapons treaty implementation. We have witnessed the unraveling of the nuclear nonproliferation regime, exemplified by the failure of the NPT Review Conference last month and by increased nuclear weapons production in nearly all of the nuclear weapons states. Russia is threatening nuclear weapons use to prevent increased NATO challenges to Russia's conventional war in Ukraine. And in recent months, we've even seen Sweden reverse its nuclear weapons policy to embrace their use as it seeks entry into NATO. Clearly, the world is at a low point in nuclear weapons restraint. And with ongoing wars, most notably in Ukraine, states are building up conventional weapons forces as well, the very opposite of what we seek under the United Nations' pledge of general and complete disarmament. So given these trends, what are the prospects for success of a special session of the UN General Assembly on Complete Disarmament? Let me offer some reasons for hope, if not a precise pathway to move forward. Some of these reasons for hope have been mentioned by several during this conference. So I just want to highlight four particular reasons. First, the conflict in Ukraine illustrates once again that the line that some seek to draw between nuclear and conventional weapons in war is in fact quite blurred. Russia has been able to invade a sovereign country with conventional weapons while deterring direct NATO confrontation by threatening to use nuclear weapons. Such entanglement of these weapons systems starkly reveals to a broad public the relationship between nuclear and conventional weapons. It makes clear that nuclear and general disarmament must go hand in hand. Second, the 2021 Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons holds the promise of becoming an effective instrument of nuclear disarmament. And countries in the Global South, along with non-governmental organisations well-represented here today, and with middle powers such as Austria, Mexico and Norway, and most notably, countries in the Global South, deserve the credit for its success. The first review conference last June demonstrated the power of the coalition of 66 states that have now ratified the treaty, along with civil society organisations when they work together in the framework of the UN. Although the treaty has not gained favour with the nuclear weapons states or their allies, it provides support to the nuclear nonproliferation treaty goals of nuclear and general disarmament and as weight to the norm that nuclear weapons have no place in our global society. A third related reason for hope is that countries of the Global South have welcomed an approach to weapons disarmament based on humanitarian needs to protect civilians and provide for human security, as articulated in the TPNW and in the 1997 Mine Ban Treaty that prohibits anti-personnel mines. It is countries in the Global South as well that have instituted nuclear weapons-free zones to protect themselves as much as possible from the horrors of nuclear war. These five zones, I don't need to remind you, encompass Latin America and the Caribbean in the 1967 Treaty of Tuataloco, the South Pacific in the 1985 Treaty of Rarotonga, Southeast Asia with the 1995 Treaty of Bangkok, Africa with the 1996 Treaty of Pele and Daba, and Central Asia with the 2006 Treaty on the Nuclear Weapons-Free Zone of Central Asia. These regions have led the way on nuclear disarmament and call on the nuclear states of the Global North to follow their example. Countries in the Global South also understand the high costs of maintaining conventional military forces and have sought to limit them. In the aftermath of violent conflicts, many acknowledge the trade-offs between expenditures for civilian welfare and spending for military forces and choose economic and social development rather than weapons purchases to bring prosperity and security to their citizens. Fourth, the United States, the country with the largest and most expensive and extensive military in the world, can learn, must learn, from the example of the Global South if it is to thrive. In fact, some of us in the United States see how growing military expenditures are threatening the very fabric of American society. The US government has reduced its support in recent decades for public education, healthcare and environmental protection, even while increasing military budgets. The emphasis on raising military spending shortchanges other programmes in the federal budget, including those for infrastructure that supports public health and renewable energy, for family and childcare and for institutions of learning. Such spending patterns tend to disadvantage the already disadvantaged and contribute to disaffection and political polarisation. These trends in turn are threatening the democratic norms of American society. This crisis of democracy is creating a new humility among some leaders and citizens in the United States, leading to renewed questions about the imbalance between military and social spending. I take heart, even in these most difficult times, in the prospect that public reaction is bringing leaders to their senses as we take stock of these long-term developments in the United States. These four trends then, I suggest, set the stage for a special session and UN action on general disarmament. A new appreciation for the entangled relationship between nuclear and conventional warfare. Second, the success of the TPNW with its call for a nuclear weapons ban. Third, leadership by the Global South on nuclear disarmament and reduction of conventional weapons expenditures. And fourth, in the United States, a growing recognition that rising military expenditures rob public spending on social infrastructure that provides for human security. But even if I am right about the prospects for change and how we think about disarmament, when can the international community make good on the 1946 UN promise to disarm? The current war in Ukraine will end sometime, in a month, in a year or in several years. When it does, the world will bear witness once again to the senseless and absolute destruction of a vibrant and prosperous society. Once again, national leaders, as they did after World War II, will assert the need for general disarmament and the abolition of war. But we cannot leave this important work to political leaders alone. It is civilians who are targeted in so-called modern wars and who suffer the gravest consequences, who have greater say in nuclear and military decisions than they have in the past. Finally then, hope rests in the persistent and courageous actions of citizens, peoples and leaders of the Global South, several of whom we've heard from today, of global civil society organisations partnering with middle powers, as we've also heard from today, and of citizens in the Global North. The recent passing of Mikhail Gorbachev reminds us of a time when ending the Cold War was unthinkable, when the idea of abolishing nuclear weapons was unthinkable. Yet it was mass movements of citizens in Europe and the United States and indeed around the world who gave the Soviet leader an opening to propose the unthinkable. We cannot recreate the past, but perhaps we can use this time of peril to inspire many more to demand an end to the instruments of war, to demand the unthinkable. Of course, there's a special role for those at this conference who already understand the trade-offs between military spending and human security, who resolve conflicts through negotiation rather than armed conflict and war, and who are already working for a world free of military weapons. But in the end, we will need a whole society approach, an approach that begins with a fourth special session of the UN General Assembly on General and Complete Disarmament. Thank you very much for your attention and I welcome any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr Benedict, for your insightful presentation and particularly for highlighting different reasons for hope towards the prospect of advancing disarmament and for pointing out the prominent role that the Global South has been playing in implementing such efforts. Next, I'm pleased to hand over the floor to Dr Randy Riedel. He's Executive Advisor of Mayors for Peace and International NGO headquartered in Hiroshima. Earlier, Dr Riedel served as a Senior Political Affairs Officer in the UN Office for Disarmament Affairs, as a nonproliferation advisor to US Senator John Glenn and as an international political analyst at the Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory. Dr Riedel, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'm quite honoured to be on this distinguished panel today. The great sardonic baseball player Yogi Berra once said, "If you don't know where you're going, you'll end up someplace else." In this light, the best point of departure for any serious discussion about convening another General Assembly Special Session on Disarmament is to recall that the UN's ultimate goal in this field is general and complete disarmament under effective international control, or GCD. This has been on the General Assembly's agenda since 1959 and has been the world's central disarmament goal since SSOD I in 1978, a goal also found in a dozen multilateral treaties, including the NPT. Yet we all know what the GCD has become, as Hamlet would say, "more honoured in the breach than in the observance." It remains on the agenda of the General Assembly's first committee and the Conference on Disarmament continues its unsuccessful efforts to develop a "comprehensive programme on disarmament." Over the last six decades, however, the international community has permitted its pursuit of GCD to be eclipsed by what states call "partial measures", a hodgepodge of issue-specific initiatives that annually appear to have less and less in common with the original GCD goal. As a result, we have seen the following dubious triumphs: the particular over the general, ad hoc improvisations over any general plan of action, and feckless pragmatism over commitments to act on commonly agreed principles. Making matters worse, some states have cynically used GCD as a rhetorical stratagem to account for the lack of progress in disarmament, especially nuclear disarmament. We hear, for example, that peace and international security in all its aspects are prerequisites for disarmament. Thus, such states have regularly failed to acknowledge how disarmament itself works to strengthen peace and security, a point repeatedly made by Doug Harmershold almost 70 years ago. Thus, we continue to find too many countries seeking security through such dangerous and unsustainable means as expanding military expenditures, growing reliance on nuclear deterrence, modernisation of nuclear arsenals and their delivery systems, threats and use of force, and most telling of all, the total absence of any reflection of solemn international disarmament aims in domestic laws, policies, directives, budgets, timetables, party priorities and organisational structures. Small wonder that our vessel here has failed to reach its destination given its tattered sail and lack of a wheel, compass, fuel and anchor. Altogether, this is hardly a favourable environment for pursuing GCD. Yet there are two countervailing processes underway that offer some brighter prospects for future progress. As I have written elsewhere, both democracy and the rule of law are coming to disarmament. The evidence for democracy in disarmament is apparent on three levels. First, multilateral disarmament arenas, especially in the UN, offer an opportunity for all countries, including small and medium states, an opportunity to join in delivering global disarmament initiatives. Second, coalitions of like-minded states have arisen in these arenas to advance such goals, which embody norms that are intended to apply universally. Third, the same arenas have been gradually opening their doors to participation by diverse cross-cutting sectors of civil society, as noted earlier in this conference. Together, these forces can help to educate the public about the concrete benefits of disarmament and the risks of failing to pursue it. This is the democratic jolt that's needed to revitalise the global disarmament process. The advantage of working in multilateral arenas on GCD is precisely because it is by far the best means available to refute the common criticisms of disarmament, especially nuclear disarmament, namely that it is too utopian, impractical, dangerous in inspiring conventional wars and arms races and other such allegations. The great value added by GCD is in demonstrating the indisputable synergy between WMD disarmament, conventional arms control, reductions in military spending, limits on the arms trade and strengthening the means to enforce the Charter's positive obligation to resolve disputes peacefully and its prohibition against threats and use of force. Thus, GCD offers a fitting response to why nuclear disarmament will not lead to a new era of conventional wars. will not lead to a new era of conventional wars, because the risks and consequences of such wars will be addressed simultaneously as nuclear disarmament proceeds. And as democratic pressures grow to achieve disarmament goals, so too will the demand for binding legal commitments, hence the rule of law in disarmament. The agenda here for future work is robust. The CBT has not yet entered into force, and a fissile material treaty has not even been negotiated. Following the Russian invasion of Ukraine, the future of US-Russian strategic nuclear arms control remains uncertain at best, at worst bleak. The nuclear powers and their allies continue to oppose the TPNW ban treaty, and even the start of disarmament negotiations, long required by the NPT. Meanwhile, there are no multilateral treaties governing nuclear weapon delivery systems, no prohibitions on development of space weapons, no ban on strategic missile defenses, and few global norms governing the production, stockpiling, development, and export of conventional arms. One way to address one way to address these challenges would be to convene an SSOD-IV, which would serve to reaffirm strongly the fundamental principles adopted at SSOD-1, including disarmament's ultimate goal. It would enable states to demonstrate that conventional arms control and nuclear disarmament are mutually reinforcing processes. It would help to advance both democracy and the rule of law in disarmament. It would enable the world community to update some of the 1978 standards to reflect new challenges that have since arisen, including in space, artificial intelligence, cyber warfare, conventional weapons that have potential strategic capabilities in terms of their lethality, accuracy, and range. It is true that the General Assembly's first committee could do more to focus on the process of integrating the various threads of GCD into a coherent general plan of action. Similarly, the CD in Geneva will likely continue its efforts to develop a comprehensive program on disarmament as mandated by the General Assembly. Yet the main argument for SSOD-IV is that it offers a greater likelihood of producing a unified, comprehensive vision of disarmament in all its aspects. The regular deliberations of the General Assembly have broken down into a multitude of issue-specific initiatives that scarcely reflect any appreciation for the implications of initiatives in other fields, or indeed the relevance of these partial measures for achieving the UN's comprehensive disarmament objective. So, there is a strong argument for proceeding with an SSOD-IV. It need not be viewed as any panacea to overcome deeply embedded obstacles to disarmament, and it surely should not be viewed as the last SSOD ever. In the years ahead, there may well be not just another SSOD, but several, as the world refines its efforts to pull together the various threads of disarmament, arms control, and non-proliferation into a coherent whole that best expresses the common interests in peace and security, the primary goals of the Charter. The final product of SSOD-IV could be a detailed outline for a future GCD treaty, along with an agreement on provisions for its negotiation. Or it could develop and promote what former Secretary-General Ban Ki-moon called "a framework of separate mutually reinforcing instruments" that would together achieve the same ultimate goal. Now, in conclusion, regardless of the particular outcome, if the world does not work together to advance this great common objective, we will end up someplace else, facing either the loathsome status quo, or worse, a nightmare beyond imagination. The alternative is to refocus on GCD, and SSOD-IV offers the potential not just to deliberate this ultimate goal, but to get on with the work of achieving it. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I spoke so long.
Not a problem. Thank you very much, Dr. Riedel. Thank you for your compelling presentation, and particularly for reminding us that GCD remains on the agenda of the General Assembly's first committee and the Conference on Disarmament, although it has been forgotten in mainstream narratives mainly focused on non-proliferation arms control. And now, I'd like to, so thank you all for your insightful contribution. I would like to open the floor to a brief discussion. I would like to ask just one question to you all. What do you think is the first step that may be pursued, the first next step, in order to activate a first special session to disarmament at the United Nations General Assembly?
I will repeat what I said in 2007 when I was chairing the Open-Ended Working Group on the SSOD-IV and advocating for the need to create a critical mass of political will. Now, "critical mass" does not imply necessarily a tremendous majority of member states working at the General Assembly. I would say that tactically, we should, for instance, rely upon the experience of the humanitarian initiative and the group of states that moved forward the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. That would be a good starting point. And as the results, for instance, of the votings, the voting of the resolutions leading to the Diplomatic Conference of 2017 that negotiated the TPNW, or the resolution that created the second iteration of the group of the GGE on nuclear disarmament verification issues, you will have a majority. And why the United Nations General Assembly? Because the rules of procedure of the General Assembly allow for voting. Although, of course, heavily recommending the quest for consensus, this remains as important as ever because consensus resolutions, consensus recommendations carry a greater legitimacy, political legitimacy. Resolutions and recommendations are politically binding, not legally binding, but they carry more weight if they are adopted by consensus, of course. But if consensus is simply not possible due to obstacles, due to the action of certain delegations that we know very well that use and abuse the rule of consensus, for instance, such as in the Conference on Disarmament, and we have experienced that, we have the possibility of voting. The possibility of voting, for instance, was considered very seriously in the 2010 NPT Review Conference. We were ready to do that. And this readiness, of course, forced the hand of certain delegation that I'm not going to mention into accepting the final documents. One of them was, of course, the very significant Plan of Action. The other was the review, properly reviewed document, which was adopted under the authority of the President, of the Chairman of the Conference. So, the venue is crucial in this respect, and the General Assembly is the right venue for this kind of initiative. But in order to create the critical mass of political support, you need to turn to certain like-minded groups that exist already and that are the right groups for moving forward this kind of initiative. And this grouping would be, in my view, the group that moved the TPNW. Now that I am having the floor, may I answer a question that was posed to me by Mr. Michael Woodman? A quick concern, he thinks that it's a mistake to relay upon age-based, especially youth organizations. Today's youth are not more likely to effect real social change than youth of generations past. Wow, ouch. I remember the strivings of my generation to produce social change here in Chile or in Latin America, for instance. The need to incorporate youth is related to the need to renew, to renew the cohorts, to renew the rank and file of practitioners and not just the practitioners, but the civil society, ranks in civil society of people ready to promote and to move politically these initiatives. And I have learned through my experience as professor in the Chilean Diplomatic Academy that it is not simply not possible to pass from generation to one generation to the next generation, the experience, the experiential kind of experience, sorry for the repetition. And I was surprised, I remember very well using an example as a way of promoting or moving my discourse. And I referred to My Fair Lady, the musical, the... And no one of them knew it, and I was astonished. I suppose, I assumed that this was universal. Well, of course, not as universal as La Traviata by Verdi, for instance, but kind of universal. So, you need to preach the faith again and again and again. And for this purpose, for renewal of the faith, for renewal of the awareness, for renewal of the commitment, you need to engage the younger generations of every age, of every time. This would be my approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much, also for answering the question from the audience. It was a very interesting answer, and I agree it's very important to renew always the historical memory because it can be lost very soon. And it's very important for young generation to be aware of the importance to advance for disarmament and that even human and Italian concerns, they should be... They're not granted. I mean, it's always important to keep reminding certain values. So, I'd like to ask the same question then to Dr. Bennett. What do you think would be the next move to activate the first special session at the UN General Assembly?
Well, I subscribe completely to what Ambassador Lavey has proposed. And I also want to remind us of the success too of the Landmines Ban Treaty, which was initiated again by international NGOs, working with the Canadian government and the leadership, which resulted in a ban on conventional weapons. And if we want to work not only towards nuclear disarmament, but also to conventional weapons disarmament, I think we can take some lessons from that as well. And as I suggested, I think it will take public awareness and what I call a whole society approach. This conference, I think, has been a splendid beginning. I am really impressed with the range and the depth of participation of the panelists here. And to have a series of UN-associated, UN-sponsored conferences, something like this, I think would go a long way towards building a coalition and building the community of people who can support a conference at the UN and also to help inform, bring more awareness to members of the General Assembly, to the state's parties, to the UN. So, I think we're, in a way, at the beginning, and it's a very good beginning indeed. Thank you.
That's very promising. Thank you very much, Dr. Bennett. And I would like to pass on the same question to Dr. Riedel. What do you think could be the next step?
Well, the SSOD-IV will not happen if there is no General Assembly resolution permitting it to, or mandating it. And typically, these resolutions contain details about objectives, the agenda, and also address the issue of whether there will be a preparatory committee meeting for the convening of such an SSOD. So, I think one of the focal points should be on putting some pressure and focus on the General Assembly to, first, I would guess that a logical champion of this idea would be one of a collection of member states, typically including Malaysia or Indonesia, to proceed with a resolution along these lines, or to at least commence a debate on it, perhaps building on some of the themes that were addressed by the recent Open-Ended Working Group that concluded its work in 2017. One theme that has always bothered me in my years at ODA was the the disjuncture between disarmament and development. In the 70s and 80s, these used to be issues treated very, very much together. And over the years, they've kind of drifted apart. And the communication between the disarmament community and the development community has been not great. I once did a comparison of the websites of the humanitarian affairs and disarmament and development. And there's basically a multiple, a parallel set of different communities there. It's a two or three culture problem. They need to do more to talk to each other and do cross-sexual alliances and cooperation. We had proposed, for example, that the heads of the human rights agencies and the head of development and ODA would together do op-eds and common speeches and promoting. And the reason for doing this, of course, is to is to make it clear that the entire world community has something to gain from this, that they are all stakeholders in this. And the points that Kenet made, I strongly agree with what she's saying in terms of making the public understand the profound opportunity costs that are being lost here by failing to address home issues. And I'd like, in particular, to tip my hat to the IPU, my former colleagues who work in the legislative process. I think they have a profoundly important role to play. And I'd also say that the other constituency that has, going to, will inevitably have an important role to play are people who live in cities. The world population is now primarily urban and growing increasingly so. And that's one of the reasons that I work for Mayors for Peace, because we believe that city mayors have an enormously important future role to play in reaching their common citizens and teaching them and helping them along to educate why they have an interest in this, both in terms of their security, but also in terms of their welfare. And it's a powerful argument. So, I would look at these constituencies, legislators and mayors, as important players in moving this agenda forward. And I do hope that one state will come forward and begin a debate in the GA on that new resolution for SSOD-IV.
Thank you very much, Dr. Riedel. And thank you all for sharing your important insights and for your contribution. It has been an absolute pleasure to hold such a high-level panel with you all.